President, our Mayor Keith Hedrick, Deputy Mayor Guinevere Depot, Councilors Lisa McCabe, Stephen Sheffield, Rashad Carter.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Finance Director Ron Uhas and City Clerk Deborah Patrick.
Okay, thank you. All right, the first refer, the next item on the agenda is referrals. First referral is appointments. And the appointment that we have tonight is Sophia Baumann for the Harbor Management Commission. And so you see, you saw the application and her resume. So she is very well qualified for this position. And she is highly recommended for the position. So are there any, Sophia, would you like to speak to the council?
Sure, yes, thank you very much. Thank you for allowing me to speak at the beginning of the meeting. So I'm a resident here in Groton City. I live on Shona Cossat Road and I'm a faculty member, research faculty member at the Department of Marine Sciences. And I really have been wanting to get involved in the life of the city, thinking that I would be able to contribute. And because, you know, I'm very interested in the marine environment as well, you know, professionally, as well as just in terms of, you know, time spent, you know, outside of work with my family, we like to wander around the water edges. I wanted to, you know, become involved in the Harbor Management Commission. And I hope that I'll be able to contribute to any kind of conversations that are going on.
That would be great. We could also probably use you in one of the initiatives that we're going to be doing in the near future, which is the greening of Groton. And we're going to be focusing on how do contaminants, including plastics and microplastics, get into the water and working their way, working from the water back to the source. So how do we mitigate and minimize and eliminate them? And so your expertise would come in handy.
I would be thrilled. Quite honestly, it's a topic that's very dear to my heart. And so I actually think we once, on one occasion, spoke about it at the beach. And so thank you very much. Yes, I'd be thrilled to.
All right, councilors, any questions or comments for Sophia? Counselor McCabe, you have the floor.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you very much for stepping forward. I'm really excited to have someone of your caliber join, join the Harbor Management Commission. And I look forward to seeing some of the good things you guys discuss. This is, this extra topic you just brought up, Mr. Mayor, that's also something I'm very interested in. So I look forward to hearing some of the good ideas you guys come up with for mitigation.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April 5th, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Sophia. You will, I'll be sending a letter to you. Well, that's not true. We'll go to the meeting and then once the council approves you at the meeting, then I'll be sending you a letter.
Thank you. Thank you so much to all of you who are present and ask.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I will just excuse myself from the meeting if that's okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next one is donation requests. USVI Dominic Negri Memorial Clubhouse. And this is 748. So if you look at your package, there is some information there. But I also happen to have Jeff Walsh, who is the base commander for Subvets. So with that, Jeff, I'll turn it over to you so you can address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, first of all, thank you for the honor of speaking in front of you. I met each and one of you and many of our memorials, but it's great to be able to speak to you. As you know, the Dominic Joe Negri Clubhouse is named in reference to the city of Groton. It's 126 years old building. And it takes a lot to maintain that building. It's our headquarters for USS VI National. Young sailors who come through, Subvets for the first time, see the Joe Negri Clubhouse. I love the history of the building. We've done a lot of work on the inside. We used the pill money to maintain the building. Mr. Mayor has been there, I think. Joe Ruska's been there and all that, and they seen all the work we've done this year. This year, we put over 15, in order between 15 to $20,000 worth of renovations inside. So if you, the last time you've been inside the clubhouse is right before the pandemic. The next time you come in, you can get blown away. It doesn't even look like, well, we used to call it your grandparents' basement. It's, it's well been renovated and all that. And maintaining that building is important. And we just recently found foundation issues with the building and we had it repaired. We found some of the bestest, had the bestest removed. Rewired the building so that it had some old antiquated wiring. And I'm not going to lie to you, being submarine sailors, as Mr. Mayor will tell you, we have a tendency to do things our way. So we found things that wasn't up to code, so we put everything up to code. That was one of my big push during this renovation. So our next push for this is to try to fix the outside. So, you know, the building is a beautiful building, but it has some eyesores on it. Some, if you, if you go down School Street, you see right where you go down to Dennis's Court, there's some part of the sidewalk that's deteriorating, that's being held up by, by brick and by, cobblestone, and that's falling off, and we had to repair that. And we're parent decided the building. But it's important to me that we, that that building looks beautiful because a lot of people come out of the state. And we do a lot out of that building. We, we host every year Thanksgiving, where we feed up to 1200 individuals meals, veterans, the police departments, fire departments and all that. And the sailors who can't go home for Thanksgiving, we feed them Thanksgiving meals out of there. We do a lot of events out of there that the public comes in to see. And, and we're also a part of the Thane Heritage Foundation. We're part of their stops when they come through and do they, once they go back and do their tour. So it's important to, to me, as a base commander, also as a district commander for New England, that we get this building to look like a gem of Groton City. Groton City has so much to offer. And I'm a, I'm a strong advocate for the members of the city council, the mayor, and what the Groton City employees have done for submarine veterans and our sailors. No other area, no, no other activity within Groton Municipal Area holds up, holds a candle to you guys. You guys blow us away. What, the support we get out of Groton City is tremendous. You guys have donated in the past and it's been, been very much welcomed. But that's what, that's basically what we have. We're using the money this year to repair outside. Our goal is to get a new fire escape in where kids can't go play on it. That scares me, having kids go play on our fire escape. It's safe, but you know, you never know what happened. We want to make it where it's only accessible for emergencies only and by those trained individuals. Other than that, I'm open to any questions, anything you have to ask me.
Okay, council, I'll open the floor. Council, you have any questions or comments? Counselor Sheffield and then Deputy Mayor Depot.
Thank you, Mayor. How much are we looking to, I guess, for the donation? How much is needed for this project?
In the past, the city has donated $300 and that's just fine. We're not asking for a lot of money from the city. We just, it's one of our yearly things we send out to our members and to our donators, those who have donated in the past. So whatever, wherever the city feels comfortable donating, very much appreciated. If it's $5, it's $5. I'd be happy with that. Beggars can't be, beggars can't be choosy. But it's, it's just an honor to, you know, to talk to you guys about it. I'm very, and Mayor Hendrick would tell you how much I love Groton City. I wish I was living in Groton City so I can vote in Groton City, you know? I thought about making, you know, the 40th School Street my second home. And I live out of there so I can vote. I'm that much enamored with Groton City than I am with Groton. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to say that, but, you know. But you guys have done so much for our, for our, our association. I just, sometimes I'm speechless and Mayor Hendrick could tell you that very rarely am I speechless.
That's true. All right, Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Does Finance Director Uhas have a record of what we've donated before and how much we have left in the account where these donations come from? Do you hear my question? Can you not hear me?
I can hear you. Ron, can you?
Mr. Mayor, I can answer the first question at least.
Okay.
2019, the council donated $300 to the same request, basically, for just a general request for funds. I believe that was the first time and the last time that it was done. I don't know that we received a request last year. And as for how much you still have left of that, I don't know. So my apologies, I mean that.
Can you hear me now, Mayor?
Yes, I can hear you now, Ron.
Oh, yeah, I unmuted my phone, but it was still muted on Zoom. So, so there's, like Jill said, and Mr. Walsh said that in 2019, we did a donation of $300 in April. And then there was no donation last fiscal year. And currently, to date, there is $1,600 remaining for donations. We've donated 3,400 so far.
Deputy Mayor Depot.
And do we have other donation requests in the pipeline? Or do we know of any other ones that we're expecting? Because the fiscal year ends July 1, right?
Correct, well, 30 June, but you're right. Jill, I don't think we have any others in the pipeline now that we're aware, right? We didn't get any before.
That's correct. We don't have any other requests at the moment. That doesn't mean we won't get any, but at the moment, we don't have any.
I also want to, well, let me, let me go back to the council. Any other comments from the council? Deputy Mayor Depot, will you go ahead and finish?
Yeah, just to finish, I'm sorry. My thought is I, you know, we designate this money every year to donate and we don't always donate the entire amount because we don't always get enough requests. Considering that they didn't put in a request last year, I, and considering that, you know, we want to make sure our, our veterans have a sense of place in the city of Groton. I think it's important to maintain that. I think I would be for making, doing the donation at $500 if we can, if everyone's in favor of that.
Okay. Where did Counselor McCabe go? Counselor McCabe, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you. I, I have to echo what Glenn, Deputy Mayor Depot just said. I was going to say the same thing, especially considering on top of what she said in, in terms of that, creating that sense of community for our veterans, but also the fact that it's a beautification project as well as a safety project with the fire escapes. I, I really think this is a worthy, worthy place to donate. So I, I would agree to up the amount to 500.
I also want to add that, in addition to everything else that Jeff said, that Subvets does, remember they, because they're the submarine organization near the base, and this is the only naval submarine school in the United States, that our young sailors get invited here to different events. They get invited to be fed by other commands. Commands have functions at this facility. And many of you have attended the functions down at the Thresher Memorial, excuse me, Flasher Memorial, whether it's, whether it's to honor the, the loss of the Thresher or whether it's to, to mark Memorial Day or whether it's to mark other military events, Subvets is always there. And they plant, they plant that out. And they are actively involved in that part of the park and in that part of the community through all the, the, the memorial events that they host there. We bring in sub-school to come in and they man the flags. That's also a ceremony with the tolling of the bells that they do to commemorate those that have been lost at sea. And so submarine veterans here are actively involved and Subvets members specifically are very involved in our community. So I fully support whatever the council decides that they want to do with this. Are there any other comments from the council? Okay, then I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April 5th. The amount of five, you said $500, right? Okay, to the, or $500.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. I'm very humbled for you inviting me to this meeting and I look forward to working with you in the future. I'll be turning over base commander, unfortunately, in three months. My time is up, but we have, we're going to be in some good hands. So I still be around, don't worry, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I'll be around, don't worry.
Okay, perfect. I look forward to coming down there and getting a tour.
Please do.
You guys have done down there.
Please do. Anybody who wants to come take a tour, please let me know and I'll bring you around the building. Just make sure to go sore away for a while. So with that, I'd like your permission if I could step away.
Yes, thank you, Jeff. Okay, we're going to go to 773, which is Parks and Rec. The first thing is 2021 Eastern Point Beach rules and regulations. This will be presented by Parks and Rec Director Mary Hill.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for, Mayor and council for allowing me to attend tonight's meeting. I'm bringing to you the rules and regulations, recommendations from the Beach and Parks Committee for 2021. There's minor changes. The first one I'm going to go to is on the second page under daily rates. From five, they, the daily rates, they went back to the 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM half-price parking daily for everyone. And that's followed through, if you go back to page one, our goal will be that we'll have the, the beach staffed until 8:00 PM every evening. So I know this was a big topic of discussion last year with the council in regards to the gate hours and half-price after 5:00. And we went to half-price after 6:00 for non-residents and free for residents. The committee feels the gate rate has been this, it hasn't, there was been no differential. It's always been, you're a city resident or a non-resident, you got charged the same at the gate. And so they want to keep it that way. So they brought this back. One of the hiccups last year was, you know, there's staff leaves at 6:00. We're planning to keep staff there through 8 o'clock. So lifeguards and supervisors and patrol will be there. So that's one of the changes they're bringing forth to you. One, two, three, and page four, the only other change on page, I have it on page four. So it's rule number 13. We used to have just no tents or screens allowed on the beach, but in the last couple of years, we've gotten people bringing those 10 by 10 EZ Pops to the beach, which are fairly large, they take up a lot of space. They're kind of dangerous if the wind catches them because they have big metal legs and they have the, you know, the canopy part that's keeping them up. So the Beach and Parks Committee would like to make that, say no tents, screens or pop-ups allowed on the sandy beach area or the Tyler House lawn. And we'll still let the small child commandos be there as long as they're not restricting their lifeguard's view or the path to the water. And the staff has the right to request that any item be removed from the sand. So those are the, those are just, those are the minor changes to the rules and regulations for this year of this document. As you all were aware, last year, we did have some temporary amendments to these rules due to the fact that we were in COVID and we still, still have that, that process going on too. Mayor, would you like me to share that, some of the amendments, write them right now?
Yeah, let's, yeah, let's, yeah, let's do that. Let's, let's share those, the changes from last year because there's going to be a lot of people interested. One of, let me, let me give a little bit of background work here. So Mary and I sit down, we looked at the ground rules that we laid for last year and we looked at, at how restrictive they were. And we understand that there were people that were unhappy. But we evaluated where we are now with the vaccines and with where we are with COVIDs and masking and those kinds of things. So there are some things that we're going to relax. And Mary will now go through those. So, Mary, I'll let you go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. So just you all know, the beach will open as normal on June 19th, which is our normal starting point, which is Father's Day weekend. What we're changing this year is, last year, we're at 50% capacity for member, for people on the beach. We're going to go to seven, we're going to start off at 75%, which is about 350 people on the beach. And then we're going to do 75% for parking, which is 175 parking spaces. So that gives us a little bit more space to accommodate everybody. We will open the beach to everybody this year. There will be no restrictions in regards to resident versus non-resident. We are going to push that everybody have a beach pass, like, you know, pre-purchased beach, beach pass. Because the daily, daily rate at the gate is still in discussion of whether or not we want to handle money again at this, handle money at the gate this year with COVID still being in place. But that's an ongoing conversation. We are looking at our registered, making it a POS system so we could take credit card instead of only cash. So that's an ongoing process, but at least we'll go up to 75% capacity to start. We're going to start beach pass sales on May 8th online and then also the mail-in process. And we'll see where things go with guidelines, potentially letting people come into the building to purchase passes if required. Some of our seniors struggle with the online stuff and also making copies of their, of their documents to get to us. The minors under the age of 16 will be accompanied by adult. But anybody, last year was anybody under the age of 18 was accompanied by adult. But with our 16-year-olds getting vaccinated, that age group can get vaccinated. We've decided that they can come to the beach unaccompanied. The concession stand will, as you guys know, will be open this year per prior discussions. You know, we've had Ernie come in and we have gotten public food, gotten public school food services coming back. Ernie and I will work on an access pattern to follow. So there's a, an entrance and an exit so that we don't have any bottleneck areas so that we can have flow. So with that being open, picnic tables will come back out so people have a place to eat. I'm looking at means and ways to try to figure out how to keep those clean, other than, you know, some of my different ideas, right, be like disposable tablecloths that fit on the picnic table so they can just roll that up and throw it away and then we can put another one down. The bathrooms will be monitored and limited occupancy like in the past. We will still require, because right now mask mandate is still part of the state executive orders. So masks will be required to be worn from vehicle to destination at the beach. Social distancing will be enforced, but it's going, we're going to drop it down to 10, a 10-foot, this social distancing of 10 feet as opposed to the 15 feet that we had last year. I believe those are the, those are the major, major changes from previous, from last summer.
Okay, good. So any questions or comments for Mayor regarding the 2021 Eastern Point Beach rules and regulations? Deputy Mayor Depot.
A couple things. There was a referral made last year about opening the beach on Memorial Day. And I think it just got left in committee. But I bring it up because last year, when COVID became an issue, what happened was other beaches were open Memorial Day and we weren't open. But the gate was open, so people were coming to our beach when there were restrictive rules at other beaches and just, you know, a lot of people at the beach, it was kind of chaotic. But because our beach wasn't officially open, we didn't have anyone there enforcing the rules. I'm just curious, one, I guess, why that didn't get addressed at all in committee? And two, what, maybe what Director Hill's thoughts are on that issue? Because it would seem like it would make sense to open at the same time as everyone else. Because what happens is we essentially are physically open, but not able to enforce any rules or have any monitoring of any kind. And it, it seems like a liability to me.
Hold on, Counselor Carter, I'm going to let Mary address this and I'll, then I will recognize you. Mary?
So, so the committee did look at that. So they have opened once. We opened once Memorial Day weekend. It was the year that the beach had opened to everybody in 2002. From a standpoint of operations, if you go a typical year operationally, it wasn't financially feasible, it wasn't financially sound. There wasn't as many people on the beach. There was, you know, last year was an exceptional year in regards to nobody was in school, nobody was working. A lot of people are home in May last year before, before, in early June. The prior year that they tried to open Memorial Day weekend, we lost money. The other thing that was discussed and I shared with the committee is this isn't budgeted for this year. My budget doesn't, my budget doesn't, my budget goes to June 30th. If I were opening Memorial Day weekend, I'd have to find six weeks' worth of payroll monies that's not budgeted for because it was brought up during the, during the year that the budget, after the budget was already approved. So that would be something we'd have to, if we wanted to move forward or we have to find the money, first and foremost, if we want to open Memorial Day or if we want to do it moving forward, we'd have to budget that accordingly. Because we, we don't budget, oh, it's, sorry, it's not six weeks, it would be a digital three. So that was discussed with the committee, the Beach and Parks Committee. And so that's where they stand on that with staying, continuing to stay open, our opening day being June 19.
But Mary, you and I had a conversation, I think, about this. And then you also say that because some of our staffing are high school and college.
Yes.
Guys that, that opening a whole lot earlier ends up being a challenge. Isn't that one of the reasons that we do what we do or am I?
Yeah, yes, Mayor, you are correct. Our three, out of our, we have four beach supervisors, three of which are teachers. So they're not available to school year ends. And right now, the lifeguards that we have coming back are all high school students. So we would, we wouldn't have supervisors and/or guards on the beach due to the fact that they are not available. Or we'd, or we'd have to rehire, we'd have to hire new people to do that. And we have very good supervisors and lifeguards right now that we really don't want to lose, so.
We, we could, you know, let me ask you that. I mean, I, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just, since it was brought up, we'll just ask the question. You and I could look at, if we opened earlier, what the impact of reduced staffing might do as far as we may have to put up the signs, no lifeguards on the beach, but we could still have beach supervisors, maybe, that could police the area, for lack of a better term, to enforce the rules. Is that something that we should look at?
That is something we could do. If we went with our current supervisors, we'd have one. We are posting for an additional beach supervisor. Unfortunately, that process hasn't started. I mean, just looked at applications in last week. If we got somebody who wasn't in education and wasn't a teacher and we could get somebody else. If not, then it's, it falls back on me having to be down at the beach and also trying to run the department.
Understand, okay. Deputy Mayor Depot, did you have a follow-up?
Obviously, that all makes sense. And I, I remember discussing it a little bit, but I just didn't, we don't, I guess we don't really have a formal way of like reporting back from committees so much other than in communication reports. But, so I just, I hadn't heard the conclusion of that before. But I, I mean, I, I mean, I understand that. I would think that we wouldn't need full staff. I think, like you said, maybe the thing would be to get, would be to get creative because it just makes me, um, I got feedback last year that basically people were breaking all the rules and the week, you know, week and two weeks before the beach was officially open and people who wanted to break the rules flocked to our beach and I don't, I just don't like the idea of encouraging that. Um, it created a little bit of a problem last year, but, um, that's the only reason I, I bring it up, but I completely understand why it doesn't really work well with the system that we have because the employees we have are in education or in school. Um, I have more questions. Do you want me to continue or do you want to give someone else a chance to talk?
Well, let me, I want to give, uh, Counselor Carter a chance to talk because he, he had his hand up and then I'll come back to you. Counselor Carter, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I, I just wanted to start off by saying it was, it was discussed and she being all the notes that, um, that, uh, that, that concluded all of the committee meetings. Um, and I was gonna add to what she said, uh, Mayor, about the, um, one of the things was the staffing, you know? Um, and I would also say that, uh, you know, moving it to, moving it up to, um, what would that be? Memorial, was that May, what, thirtieth? What is that, the last weekend? The last week of May, you know, you know, I mean, you know, what's this, what's to say that we don't start having weather beginning of May? It's like, there has to be a cutoff, you know? So, you know, one could argue that the first week of May, the, the people are gonna start flocking there, you know? They need to be a cutoff, but I think the fees are set based off the timeframe allotted that we currently have now. So if we change that or add that extra time, you would assume that we would also have to change the budget to allow for that extra staffing. So, um, as far as the, uh, the people that are on the beach, you know, the liability, quote-unquote liability, I mean, we, we, we could have people surfing right now, you know? That's not our liability, you know? Um, we'd also discuss that. I believe actually you said that, Mayor. You mentioned that about the first liability. So, that's all I had to add.
Okay, all right, thank you. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor. Well, wait a minute, is there any other counselors, first-time counselors who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Deputy Mayor Depot, you have the floor.
Um, I saw that there was a question brought up about the, um, well, I asked them, I think I've mentioned this before too, about Washington Park, but I saw that there was a question brought up about the basketball nets at the beach. And, um, it looked like Director Hill was gonna look into that and I was just curious if she did. See, I think the CDC still recommends that we not have basketball hoops up. I tried to look it up the other day. Um, has anyone like definitively looked that up recently?
Well, Mary and I talked about it this morning. I know that on Facebook, different places had, some places had hoops up, some places didn't have hoops up. The reason we made the decision was based on CDC guidelines and what the executive orders were. They talked about league play, but they also talked about, uh, wearing masks and social distancing when, when the kids are playing now with basketball inside, they're having to wear a mask and those kinds of things. Uh, but I don't think, Mary, Mary, did you get a chance to look at that today? I know you were very busy with a lot of things that were going on today.
I, I did try to pull it up. I can't find anything that's changed since last, was it spring or summer when we took the, the hoops down? But I, I do have a few other places to reference tomorrow. I just haven't gotten to it today. I didn't get to it today.
So, so we will do research, we will get a definitive answer and we will get that out to all the council and we'll probably post something on Facebook to try to let people know uh, why we made the decision that we've made. Uh, so, uh, hold on, Deputy Mayor Depot, let's go with, uh, Counselor Sheffield.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. What was, uh, Governor Lamont's order, um, regarding, again, um, opening up venues as far as restaurants and stuff like that? Does outdoor sports activities, what is the maximum allowed for outdoor activities? Has that been, um, discussed to where outdoor basketball playing? Would that also be part of that along with, let's say, concert events and so forth?
That's different.
What was the governor's order in reference to that?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have to pull that up. We, when we looked at this before, the town, so the town has some hoops up and some hoops still now. Uh, the town looked at outside, outdoor activities. We looked at the outside, outdoor activities, but we also looked at basketball and the thing about the close contact and proximity and those kind of things is why we kept the hoops down because of the way that the spread was. Now with the vaccines and things like that, we'll see if there's been additional guidance that has come out on that. And if there's additional guidance that comes out that says that we can put basketball hoops back up, we'll put basketball hoops back up. I mean, it's, it's, it is still about, uh, maintaining safety and I know there are people gonna say personal rights and be responsible and those kind of things, but we've went through, we've been through this for a year, so I think people understand uh, why we do what we do. But we can go, we will, we are in the process of looking at this again uh, to see if there's been any changes that, uh, started on Friday that would impact this. So far, we didn't see anything, but we will, we'll look at it again. And like I said, we'll get back to the council and we'll let people know on Facebook.
Yeah, because my issue would be, well, if you're allowing restaurants to be fully capaci- at full capacity to operate inside, how can't you allow basketball to be played outside in open space? But allow, like I said, having restaurants at full capacity inside where it spreads, would spread even more inside and actually outside.
Mayor, may I address that real quick? This is Mary. So there are guidelines, there are guidelines for outdoor recreation, but they're still required to wear a mask and they're still required to be six feet distancing. So I'm not quite sure how you play an open game of basketball on a basketball court staying six feet apart. Those are the outline, those are the guidelines for outdoor recreation right now. Um, and those are the guidelines for restaurants too. A restaurant could be at full capacity, but it still has to be, they still have to wear a mask and they still have to social distance. So there's those social distancing guidelines are still there. So that's where we, we have to kind of look at how, how basketball's played on that, that, those courts.
Well, Mary, I'm, I'm not sure if one could eat within, uh, six feet of one another and, and have a mask on. So I haven't figured that part out yet. So how that's, you know, more contained than being outdoor, out, have an outdoor basketball game. So I'm, you know, but again, I'm not sure how Governor Lamont has set that piece up as far as comparing outside with indoor restaurant dining, so.
Well, and, and I'm not gonna get into debating how dining and basketball is, we're not gonna get into a comparison and contrast of basketball and lunch. But what we're gonna do is we're gonna look at the, the rules. There are some rules that have come out that talks about uh, so- social recreation and talks about, um, uh, face coverings, it talks about events and stadiums and there's different things. So what we're going to do is we're gonna look specifically at the rule changes and see what the current rules are associated with basketball and then we will let you know what they are. And if it is to put the basketball hoops back up, we will put the basketball hoops back up. But, um, so that's what we'll do. All right, Deputy Mayor Depot, you had a couple more questions?
Um, well, one thing, I, I thought that last year we got a copy of the rules with the changes in a different color so that we could see them easily and I just want to say that I like that better. Um, but um, it was just easier to see because I can't, um, see all the rule changes. The other thing is, I'm, you know, I'm not sure the reasoning on changing the rules back. We changed it last year so that city residents could get in free after six o'clock. We did that for a reason, so that people have access to the beach even if they can't afford a beach pass. I am against changing that back to the rules that we had before. I fought hard for it last year because I think that city residents who pay taxes should have access to the beach for free while the sun is still up. And in the evening, when it's not as busy, a lot of the people who stay all day are gone for the day anyways. Um, I don't like the idea of changing that back. Um, and I'm, I'm not entirely sure if the motivation is budget. You know, the Parks and Rec budget isn't entirely encapsulated. It, the, it's not, Parks and Rec doesn't fund itself. So if it takes extra pa- taxpayer dollars, a few extra dollars from the general fund to finance for people who can't afford a beach pass to get into the beach for free, as I said last year, I think that's important to do. It's a, you know, public-owned beach, the public pays taxes and there are some people who cannot afford a beach pass who are choosing to buy a week of groceries instead of a beach pass. So I don't, I don't like that.
So I will refer, um, the recommendation again from the Beach and Parks Committee. Um, they looked long and hard at this again this year. They're trying to stay in compliance with the rule, the law that went into effect in twenty-two thousand and two in regard to that you should not have a disparity between residents and non-residents. They do have a handful of committee members that are, were still on the, that were on the committee there and they were advised by the attorney to make sure that the rate at the gate stayed the same consistently for everybody. Um, that was their first concern. We do have a non-resident and a resident rate for beach passes, which is, you know, we can do that as long as it's not a, an exorbitantly different, you know, we pay thirty-two dollars for a resident and it's three hundred and twenty dollars for a non. That is not, there's a disparity there. Um, but when they were doing this, you know, oh, what, twenty, twenty years ago, twenty, almost twenty, or nineteen, eighteen years ago, uh, that was the recommendation from the attorney so that we were in compliance with that law. The other thing that they took into consideration is the operations of checking everybody, who, everybody's, so anybody who did not come in after, anybody who came in last year, if we had a gate rate that came in after six o'clock, would have to, if they didn't have a pass in their car, they would have had to been stopped. They would have been at, how we would have had to ask for their resis- registration, because that's what we do for a beach pass. And then we'd had to verify whether they lived in the city or not. So there is an operational issue in regards to how, I mean, we're gonna be do, there's different people at the gate in the evenings. They're not the same consistent people every day at five o'clock or six o'clock. And so they felt, one, we were staying within the guidelines of the twenty-two thousand and two ru- ruling, which we got a, a handful of flack about last year. And so this is their way of, let's keep it, um, the disparity not there, have everybody's pay the same if they choose not to buy a beach pass right away. Um, beach passes are thirty-two dollars for a resident. Um, the beach is open for eighty days, so there's, you know, mathematically, I mean, it's, it's, it's a very inexpensive way to enjoy a facility that the city does operate and maintain. So that was their reasonings behind it and, and so that's why they would like to go back to that.
Hey, Mary, last-
Yes, sorry.
Did we charge at all after five or after six?
Uh, last year we didn't have a, we didn't charge at all at the gate. They had to have a beach pass to get in. We didn't have, um, we didn't handle money at the gate. We didn't have the register there.
Right, so if we did that this year and just made it consistent and said after five or after six, then you get in for free, uh, then there wouldn't be an issue with the disparity and we would still be able to allow access to the beach for those that couldn't afford it, uh, to come to the beach. Is that kind of true?
It, it could be. I'd have to bring this back to the Beach and Parks Committee because this is their recommendation, not mine. They, you know, this is their recommendations to the council. Uh, I, they, I would probably, I could probably speak on behalf of, of some of them that if you chose to not charge after six o'clock, then there'd be no staff down there at all. And we'd have to maintain bathrooms and, 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 and whatnot because the concession stand would stay open. So I, I, I know there's a balance there. There's things that we have to maintain. We have to make sure the bathrooms are kept clean because we have covid restrictions in place and our guidelines. You know, but if you're gonna stop, like, you're gonna allow everybody, I mean, it worked great for three years. There was no issues for three years. All of a sudden, last year it became an issue that we were opening, we were charging half-price from five to eight. Um, we had, we have expenses associated with it and, you know, I understand that the beach doesn't con- all pay for itself, but there should be some, um, value to what you're paying for, for a beach pass and, um, that's the, you know, the thought of the Beach and Parks Committee when they discuss this.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, a few things. I don't understand how that, the argument that we can't charge a different amount, we charge a different amount for the passes and the daily rate, the half, paying half the daily rate, the discrepancy between that and letting city residents in is not any different than the discrepancy between the annual beach pass rate for residents and non-residents. So to me, that's kind of a silly argument.
Well, it was the legal, it was the legal, that was the legal argument back in two thousand and two when the beach had to open to everybody. The attorney said not to hit every aspect of your access to the beach. So that's why they have a different rate for the beach passes, but everybody paid the same at the gate. So that way you were not across the board making it a very, um, resident, non-resident situation, because that's what they were trying to get away from in two thousand and two. Is that, that's why the lawsuit came about, because a non-resident was denied access to a beach in another part of Connecticut. That's why the municipal-only beaches went away. So the attorney's advice at that time was to make one or the other. So they made the beach passes, the one with the different rates and they made the gate fee consistent for everybody. Everybody paid the same. So that way they were staying within the guidelines of the law from two, two thousand and two.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Um, I'm not gonna take too much time. I, you know, part of the reason I think that this hadn't come up before is I would, I buy a beach pass, so I wasn't aware that it had changed from, uh, I thought that it was free for residents after a particular time because it had been for a long time. So I wasn't even aware and that's why it became an issue last year because I got several complaints from people who used to go to the beach in the evening. I think if we're, if we're gonna be sticklers about, you know, it has to be the same at the gate, I would be in favor of doing what the mayor suggested and making it free for everyone after six P M. Non-residents, I, I would, I would venture to guess that non-res, not too many non-residents are going after six P M anyways. And, um, again, with the money thing, I honestly, that, that to me is not a good reason to restrict public access to the beach, not a good enough. Anyways, people pay their taxes and just because someone's not paying a fee doesn't mean we can't have staff there. The money doesn't come directly from those fees they're paying at the moment. And I don't think, I just think this is a bad idea. We're taking benefits away from the residents for, I don't think a good enough reason.
Can, can I say something, uh, Mayor? This is Counselor Carter.
Hold on.
Yes, I feel like Mary's kind of speaking for the committee and she's not, you know, she merely only brings things from the committee, you know, it's not, you know, that is don't feel like it was bashing on, on, on the director, you know? Um, but I know that sitting in, in the, in one of those, um, there were certain things that came to play for that, especially with the staffing, somebody, people, we have to pay for, the city has to pay for, um, the lifeguards, the lights that are on, um, you know, and with, uh, with the minimum wage and all that, all, all that other stuff going on, you know, that's, that's going to cost us. I, and I, uh, in discussing this, the committee is very adamant that if we do this, then there's gonna be no staff there and that's it, you know? So, you know, I think that we have to look at that and Director, uh, Director, um, Hill brought this up last year, is that you gotta look at what, uh, you know, do, do you look at the beach as a beach or do you look at, you know, as a service, you know, do you look at the concession stand as a service, you know, and you have to pay for services. That's unfortunate, but you have to. Well, I'll just rest right there because we have a lot to discuss. And I, I, I think we need to get off this topic and move forward. That's, that's just my take on it.
Well, it is a committee of the whole and this is where discussion, deliberation and debate occurs. Uh, so that we don't have discussion, deliberation, debate during council meeting and potential locked, uh, locked votes and then it doesn't pass and, and I want to try to avoid that
Yeah.
if we can.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, isn't it any different from what you just said, Mayor? If it's not gonna pass, let's just move on with it so we can go back to the committee. If it's not gonna pass, let's just move on with it. So we can go back to the committee. And we can just, you know, this isn't the first time this happened. So if we're not gonna, if it's not gonna pass, let's just move on from it.
Is there any other discussion from council? So, uh, Councilor McCain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've sort of hesitated, uh, jumping in on this because, uh, I think the debate was already. Going quite well. Demonstrating the, the two opposing points. I, I have to admit, I am also leaning towards your proposal of. Uh, allowing the resi- residents and non-residents to, uh. Be able to have free entry into the park. They'd be able to go use the concessions, uh, which would. Potentially be extra revenue in the concessions area for people, um, say, starting at. I don't know, six or six thirty P M. Uh, I think that if we're allowing people to come in. And use a beach, that it might be a good idea to continue having staff on the beach until eight. Uh, I think the budget for this year is probably already in place. I think that's what Mary said, so. We can assess at the end of the season whether, uh, you know, there's been impacts in terms of revenue versus. Being able to pay, uh, the staff on the beach and, and what the impacts are. And so that. As we talk about next year and, and setting the budget for next year, we can take those things into account. I, I guess that's where I'm leaning and I thought I should express it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McCain. Deputy Mayor Depot, did you have, did I see a hand?
Yes.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I, you know, especially considering, as everyone pointed out, last year we had different rules because of COVID. So I don't understand where the instigation of changing this back is because it didn't impact anything last year. Apparently because we required people to have a beach pass to get in no matter what. Um, and we didn't do daily, uh, rates. So I, I, I don't really understand. And I'm, by no means am I attacking the director. It's not a, about that whatsoever. It's, it's more about making sure that our residents have access. And yes, people do need to, you know, understand the value of things, but there are people in our city who pay taxes. And also don't have the money to pay for a beach pass. So. That, that does happen. So they are paying to maintain the beach. Their money goes to maintain the beach, but then they don't get to use it. So. I just have a problem with that. And I, um, think, you know, if that means we have to go back to the. Uh, Beach and Parks Committee and have them look at it, I don't think that's a rule change that we, A, need for budget reasons. And B, I don't think that's right for the residents to restrict their use. The last thing I, I just wanted to ask is on page six, under special events. There, under number three, it says the parking be- fee will be forty dollars thirty two. So I think there's like a typo. But I, I'm not sure. So maybe we're going from thirty two to forty dollars is maybe the intent there? I think that's my last.
I don't have, it might, yeah, it went to forty dollars a couple of years ago, so that might just be a typo. It was thirty two. But now it's up to forty. I don't have that on my paper, so I don't know if I have the same document as you. Parking fee will be forty dollars for those without a season pass to, no matter what day of the week a special event falls on. Is that what you're looking?
Yes.
Okay.
I mind it says forty thirty two.
So, yeah, it went from, so that was probably where one of those, if we had it in different colors for you, you'd see it.
Right.
So, yep.
Yeah, on page six. It, it has that parking fee will be forty dollars and then thirty two dollars.
Yeah, so it, it changed to forty dollars a couple of years ago, so I'm not quite sure. So.
That's something we can look at.
Yep. This is, could just be a typo.
Okay, so, uh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Depot, I didn't see.
I was just gonna say, I'm not ready to vote on this. For one, I'd like to look at, to, um, compare the actual rules from last year to these. Since I don't have the change, change colored sheet thing, um, so I can't see where all the changes are. And I am, um, I definitely don't think it's a good idea to change that one rule about residents getting in free. Maybe the thing to do could, I know that we got an illegal opinion in two thousand and two, that was twenty years ago. Maybe can we get a legal opinion on charging different amounts for the daily rates and if that's a problem?
Okay.
Keith, can we address that real quick in regards to the state is actually doing a study this year?
Yeah.
In regards to, um, a complaint from a, or, or bill that was gonna come forth from New Haven regarding. Making all public beaches free. But it went, it didn't become a bill. It went to a study over the next year between D P and some other agencies to see if municipal beaches can charge at all. So that's something that we have to keep our eyes on this year. Meaning if they live in Connecticut and they have a license plate with Connecticut license plate, they may not, we may not be able to charge them at all for our facility. But we'll keep you posted on that one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that when we have to.
Yep.
There is a study that's coming out about disparity in, in rates between. The municipal residents and then non-residents. But like, for example, down in Bridgeport in New Haven, you know, there's a ten times difference. So I, I, I don't think we apply to that, but that's something that's being looked at. It's not in effect at this point. So we'll get to it when we get to it. Uh, Deputy Mayor Depot, did you have another comment? I saw a hand. Okay, so do I have consensus from the council to send this back to committee? To address your concerns? Okay, then.
I mean, I'm willing to move forward now, but I, if you want to take a vote now to move forward. We could do that unless.
Well, based on the comments so far, it's two and two, and it'll fail.
I, 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 I wanna be on record that I'm, I, I'm not against it. I'm, 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 I'd like to move this forward too. So if it formally fails, it formally fails.
Yeah, just, let's just vote on it.
Okay, Councilor McCain.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to understand the ramifications if we vote now. And, and it fails versus if it goes back to committee and is brought forward to us again. What, what are the difference in terms of the rules?
Okay, so what you are voting on tonight is whether or not to move this to the mayor and council meeting. So if it fails tonight, it does not move. It doesn't mean it automatically goes back, although I would recommend that it goes back. But based on discussions that we've had, it makes sense that it goes back to committee. Have the committee take a look at it and then bring it back to us. And then councils, should they decide. Could go to the committee meeting and talk to the committee and express your concerns. And then talk to them and then it could come back to a committee of the whole.
Sorry, I, I do. Mary here. I would, if it goes back to the committee, we don't meet again till April fourteenth and beach and, uh, beach passes go on sale May eighth. Would it have time to go back to a committee of the whole or could I just bring it back to a regular, uh, council meeting? I, I mean, I, I don't, if, if they decide to just, okay, we're gonna close everything down at six o'clock. And that means no staff, nobody, everything closes at six o'clock. And that's the recommendation that comes back from the committee. I'm not gonna, you know, that, if that's where they go with it, I don't know. I, 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 timing now becomes an issue because a committee of the whole meeting in April, it wouldn't go to the first meeting in May. Which is when, the third? I, I, so I, I'm just trying to, timing wise right now, how you want me to handle it. Back to the committee.
If I may, there, there will not be a meeting on May third and the May tenth meeting is only a swearing in. There will not be a meeting on May tenth, so they wouldn't meet until the following week.
So I, I don't know how you want, how that, you want that to be handled. We have, we usually give the rules and regulations out when the people buy a beach pass, so they know.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong. I think we discussed this last year, but the Beach and Parks Committee is advisory, correct?
That is correct.
So, uh, we could, uh, last year we also held a special joint meeting. Of the council and the Beach and Parks Committee, which we could do to have a discussion. But again, that's having, making the Beach and Parks Committee commit another time, which is kind of a pain. Because then you have to coordinate that with everyone. So. I know that nor, the regular thing to do would be send it back to committee, but there's nothing that says we have to do that, correct?
That's correct.
So. Could we not? Get a consensus and revise the rules on the council ourselves? Without sending it back to committee?
We. We could. We could do that or we could. Now, where would we do that?
Would you have to make a motion?
Well, yeah, it would have to be, you know, the motion's gonna have to be made. Clerk Patrick, where would we do that? Would we do that during, the, the Cal is to, you move it or you don't move it. But would we, because you don't make, you typically don't make motions during the Cal, committee of the whole rather. They're normally made at the mayor and council meeting. Where would this, where would the revisions? If the council wanted to make revisions this, that would be during the mayor and council meeting, once it's put up. And then you'd have amendments to the rules. Is that correct?
Well, when, when you have somebody come to you for donations, they, the, the council sets the amount. There, there's discussion and they make changes to, to that all the time. I think if they want to put forward, um, a motion to move it to the mayor and council. With changes to whatever rules, they, they can do that.
So you're saying make the changes to the rules tonight and then move those chain, move that. Change document to the mayor and council meeting.
Correct.
So we'd have to vote on the rules to be changed.
Yes.
Okay. And Deputy Mayor Depot.
I, I just want to say, I, I'm not personally ready to like pick which changes today. Because I can't see the changes on my paper, so I need to do some work before I, uh, even address that.
Okay.
Mayor Hedrick, can I please address that? There's only three changes and I went over them. They're under hours. Lifeguards on duty from eight to eight P, eight to A M to eight P M daily. Under, on page two, under daily rates E, five P M to eight P M, half price daily, except for special events. And then on page four, number thirteen, which is, all the things I addressed of the changes, those are the only changes that were made to the rules. Everything else stays the same as previous years. Um, that's, that was the beginning part of the presentation. There's only those three items that are changed from last year's rules to this year's.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot.
Can we get a, um. Before the next meeting, can we get a financial, like how, what the difference? Potential difference using two thousand nineteen's numbers of what the tax dollar difference would be. So the, the differential between what the Beach and Parks income is. Versus expense and then changing that, making it free after six P M. Can we see what the difference is?
Sure. Yeah, I can get that revenue loss for you, yes.
Councilor McCain, and then I'll get to Councilor Carter.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do wanna say that I, 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 I feel most comfortable if we did send this back to the committee. Because this is, this is under their purview and, and, and I, I think that discussion is healthy. Uh, I don't feel super comfortable just overriding the decisions that they've made. Cause I know they've, they've thought about it very closely. Um, and, um, this, this is their wheelhouse. Having said that, um, Mary, you've said a couple of times that. If we opened it up, uh, at a certain time in the evening, free for residents and non-residents. Prior to the eight P M, that we would not be having staff. And I still. Want to understand why we couldn't continue staff till eight. Why we'd have to, as soon as the gates are open for, free for everyone, that we have to discontinue the services. Based on the budget you've already have in place for this, this summer. I just wanna understand that a little better. Thank you.
Okay, so. Having, so prior to, we'll see. We put this in, this would, the extended gate hours went in about four years ago. Prior to that, we didn't have staff. So it would go back to the, what, the gate used to close at six o'clock, up, up until four years ago. But the committee started looking at some of the expenses that we incurred. The bathrooms need to stay open because the concession stand is open. And because that's a health code, by, a health code, um, regulation. So, you know, water is being used, paper towel was being used, soap was being used. And they looked at all that. Prior, when we closed at six before, there's no need for a gate person because they're not checking anything because it's free. We did, uh, implement patrol because at that point, people weren't, you know, we had people with dogs on the beach. We had people, uh, with open grills and parking spaces. And, uh, we had people, um, pulling paper towel dispensers off the wall. There was issues that were coming into play with, because we didn't have staff. We could look at keeping staff there. But then they're gonna, you're gonna have an expense that you're not gonna have revenue to offset it. Because you're gonna have to still keep, if you wanna keep lifeguards there, supervisors and patrol people. We usually have two patrols, so you're gonna have a staff of maybe five. That we, um, I budgeted for, I didn't have to, I didn't have to budget any additional money for lifeguards. It's just a, it's just a scheduling change. Instead of coming in eight, eight, nine and ten, they would come in eight, ten and twelve. So we'd have coverage from eight to eight. Um, a supervisor would stay, which has it in the past. That was a probably additional eighteen hundred dollars, uh, to have that till eight o'clock. But that's with, you know, people, you know, charging people. That's how the budget was put together, that the gate would stay open to eight. People would get charged. So we made that concession, you know, we made that recommendation. I mean, we, uh, operational, we'll do whatever we need to, um, to, to keep the, the place clean and safe. That's why this came into play four, four, four or five years ago was because of some of the extensive. Maintenance issues that we were having at the beach. So, so I mean, it's, it's something we can look at.
Okay, I mean, I, I can certainly understand the need to have, uh, the staff stay. Uh, especially if we've had issues in, in the past. I just think that perhaps the city budget might be able to, uh, cover that, uh, like Gwen had said it previously.
Okay, Councilor Carter, you have the floor.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, uh, just as, uh, what, uh, Councilor McCabe's stated, um. Even though that the Beach and Parks Committee is an advisory committee, they're volunteers, um, as we are. And I think that, um, we shall not cut them out of, um, of that, um. Uh, and this goes back to just, I mean, there's been several things that's come back to the Beach and Parks Committee. And I, I just don't want, uh, this to be, you know, kind of, you know, uh, we don't value what you, um, are bringing to us. I don't, I don't want that to, just to be that situation, you know, because there has been a few. My, my other thing I wanna say, because I'm a little unclear. So, um, do we have to vote this? Do, do we have to put this on the floor to, to move forward? But I, I think, I think what's being said, and I, and, and Mayor is that, you know, the council wants to bring this back. But I personally, um, do not, um. I, 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 I think, um, Director Hill stated that if we pass it, we can. I, 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 I think, um, Director Hill stated that if we pass it, we can el- eliminate the, um, the fee, there'd be no fee, but there'd also be no services. Is that correct? Director Hill?
I'm sorry.
If we, if we made, if we, if we move this, move this forward to the council meeting, um, as is, did you state that there will be no fee, but there will also be no services?
Well, no, there was a recommendation that, I mean, like I said, this, and I know there was a recommendation, I believe, brought, brought forth by Mayor Hendrick, that if we looked at, if it got changed to where we just shut the gate down at six o'clock, and that's how it gets pa, you know, passed, but my fear right now, if, if this gets defeated in a vote, I have to come back with a different resolution, so that means I have to change language. So like, any, the, um, the item number thirteen, which is the top, the tenth, the canopies, and the, you know, all that stuff, I'd have to figure out how to reword that. Um, the other thing would just be, um, the gate rate, if we decided to just go, that would be one change, but I'd have to change the other part of the document. Um, so that's my, um, uncomfortableness with this getting voted down. Um, again, and, 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 uh, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Depot made a comment that this is just an advisory committee, these are their recommendations, it doesn't necessarily mean that you guys have to agree with them, you can change it if you want to, and say, okay, the gate's gonna close at eight, everybody comes in at, sorry, six, everybody comes in at free at six o'clock.
What, wait, if this gets, if we don't vote long, is what's the alternative? I guess that's what I'm asking, uh, Mayor.
Okay, alright, so here's, here's where we go. What, what you can do is you can get your questions to Mary, and you can move this forward to the mayor and council meeting, and then, when the motion comes on the floor, you get your first ISO move, and then you get your second, you can then have an amendment. Section, you know, could you open floor for discussion? Mary can talk about the things that you guys asked her about, and then you can have an amendment to the motion to include or exclude or to change, and then you vote on whether or not the amendment passes, and then you vote on whether or not the whole thing passes. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm actually comfortable.
Make sure I'm right on that. I'm sorry, Counselor Carter?
I said, that makes sense to me, and I'm, I'm actually comfortable with that.
Okay, Counselor McCabe?
So what you're saying is we make a motion to move it to the next meeting, and then we can discuss it more there and make amendments there if we choose to, and we can get questions answered from Mary in between that time?
That, that is correct.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Clark, Clark Patrick, that is accurate, what I've stated, is that right?
Yes, that's fair, that is, that is exactly accurate, yes.
And, and that seems to, I, where we are right now, that seems to be the cleanest way. So what you're doing is you're moving this from the committee of the whole to the council meeting to then vote on it, and then you'll have a motion on the floor, you'll have a second, you'll have discussion, Mary can then talk about the different things that you guys wanna look at, excuse me. And then, um, you can put up, uh, amendments, and then vote amendments, and then vote on the main motion, on the amended motion, sorry. Okay, Deputy Mayor Depot, you had a question?
Um, well, I just wanted to, uh, more of a, a statement, kind of. Um, it keeps being implied that I don't respect the Beach and Parks Committee, um, which is offensive to me. Um, I, it has nothing to do with disrespecting anyone. My problem is that the, this, the same thing happened last year, and the reasoning keeps coming back to money. Oh, well, it costs money to run the beach. I know it costs money to run the beach, the people who pass the budget that that money comes from is not the Beach and Parks Committee. It is the city council, and I think that if we deem it worthy to spend a couple thousand dollars a year, making sure that some residents definitely have access to the beach who otherwise wouldn't, that's our choice. What we're doing by just blindly accepting this recommendation is saying, oh, we'll let the Beach and Parks Committee dictate what we do with the budget, which is not the point of the city council. So it has nothing to do with respecting or not respecting them. I don't, um, understand the impetus behind changing this rule back, because it, I, I just, there has been, the only reason that's come up again is money, and that, to me, is not the, a good reason to exclude city residents from having a really short amount of free access to the beach. It's two hours. Like, I, I don't understand the point of that, and it has nothing to do with respecting or disrespecting anyone's volunteer position. It has to do with respecting all of the residents and representing what is best for the residents.
Right. Well, and, and one of the things that we've talked about is trying to pot, trying to provide equal access uh, to residents, and there are some residents that can't afford this and do appreciate this, being able to come down. Uh, if they wanna, you know, you could feed a family of four for a small amount of money down there, you could wa, you could watch the sunsets, those kind of things, that way everybody has access. So, uh, there is that as well, okay? Anything else from the council?
So what are we doing with this?
Well, I'm, I'm getting ready to, I'm getting ready to, uh, to get this, so I'll need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April fifth.
So move.
Second.
Second, so we have a motion and a second. Now, under further discussion, what is it you would like Mary to, uh, be ready for? Or do you wanna send her emails? How do you want to address it? Do you wanna give it to her now, or do you wanna send her an email? What is it? Do you want to, what's your direction to staff? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Uh, I mean, I'd be willing to just send an email if that were.
Okay, alright. Council, okay with that? Send your recommendations to Mary Hill?
That's fine.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? Was there a hand? No, okay. Yeah, uh, hearing none, all in favor, say aye? Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. The next one is twenty twenty-one Parks and Recreation user fees, Mary?
Alrighty, okay, so this one isn't in color either, so I apologize, 'cause we send them that way, so we're going to go, well, we'll have to make a change to page, page three, 'cause the gate rate is on there, so that's one of those things that's probably gonna make this go back to committee, because that's in there. Um, page four, uh, number four, recreation programs, is the next change under summer playground. Uh, the daily rate for a full, full, for, for eight-week program was two fifty for a resident, it's going up to three hundred. And it was two fifty for a non-resident, and it's going up to three seventy-five. The weekly rate was forty, and it's going to fifty, and it was fifty, and it's going to sixty, um, for, re- resident versus non. Um, the half-day program was a hundred, it's going up to a hundred and fifty, it was a hundred and fifty for non-residents, going up to two hundred, and then it was, uh, forty and fifty, uh, for the weekly rate. Uh, this in, this, um, increase comes about because of, um, minimum wage. Minimum wage currently is at twelve dollars an hour. The maj- majority of the staff that works at the summer playground are recreation assistants that make twelve dollars an hour. They will be making thirteen dollars an hour come August first. Um, so we have to, um, we, this, this is other than one of those programs that doesn't pay for itself, but we try to get some of the fees back so that we can, um, have a, uh, successful program for the kids, so that's one area of change. On the next page, under field, ballfield fee structure, um, under group two, all other youth, uh, baseball programs, we used to have it at twenty dollars for the week, during the week, uh, for games and thirty for the weekends, we kinda gotten more in line with what the town does, the town does thirty-five and forty-five, so we've got our fees up to where they's. And these are the groups, like the AAU teams that play, um, they, you know, they spend money to play and, and, and this, this is, in fact, this does not affect Little League or Babe Ruth or any of those youth programs that, uh, we let them use our fields. Um, it changes again under group five, all adult leagues, we got that, that was again at twenty and thirty, so now it's thirty-five and forty-five. Um, group number six, adult tournaments, used to be a hundred dollars for the day, which doesn't quite go in line with, um, a per game fee, so we kinda, they, they brought that up to, um, to a hun, two hundred and fifty dollars per day. Um, and then, uh, baseball camps, we used to have baseball camps, that's group eight, next page. Um, so they, uh, put that in line with, uh, what they, uh, with, it used to be a hundred and fifty, fifty dollars and a hundred dollars, so we increased that a lot. We don't have a whole lot of baseball camps anymore at the, at the facility, but at least if we do, we can get some revenue for it. Again, an ou- outside group coming in, charging people to be part of theirs, their, um, their camp, so. And then the last change and user fees is under the Zaburski House. Um, I've been in the city for, this will be my sixteenth summer, and the fees for the Zaburski House have not changed in sixteen years, so uh, the Beach and Parks looked at this, and they decided to raise it up forty dollars an hour for a resident, fifty dollars per hour for a not, no, sorry, eighty, I can't read, eighty dollars for a non-resident, and then the business rate went from, uh, went to a hundred and two hundred. Um, the city rate used to be twenty-five dollars, and the non-resident fee used to be fifty an hour. So those are the, those are the changes to the, to the user fees.
Comments from the council? Where are we here? So, Mary, the, it looks like on this one, you'll probably need to make the same. It looks like they're gonna want to evaluate the same thing when he talks about the times?
Yes.
Okay.
'Cause that's part of this, yep.
I, I understand. Deputy Mayor Depot?
Um, I feel like, again, I, I'm gonna go back and look at last year's, because I, I I feel like we just raised a bunch of rates last year, and we're, like, the summer playground rates, I thought that we just raised them last year, and it seems like a large increase in price, not incremental. So, um, I'm not in favor of doing big increases every year when, it, you know, I'd rather do smaller incremental increases, 'cause I think it was two fifty to three hundred for a city resident, that's a pretty big jump in a fee. Um, and I just, I, I understand that minimum wage, which has gone, is going up, but that's the excuse we used last year for the large increase, and I don't love the idea, I mean, obviously, we're trying to recoup some of our costs on these things, and it is very common to pay for these programs, for playground programs and stuff like that in other cities, but I don't like the idea of jumping them up so, so much higher than they were. It seems like a steep increase, and to me, two fifty to three hundred, that fifty dollars might be enough to make someone go, you know what, I can't afford that. I'm not gonna put my kid in the program this year. That's maybe a fifteen-dollar jump or something smaller would be more reasonable. Something like fifty bucks seems like a lot.
Okay, other counselors?
I think, um,
Counselor Carter?
Counselor Carter, I, 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 I asked this, I asked the same questions, particularly with the parks and, right, and there are already, um, programs in place for to sit disadvantaged, to disadvantaged youth, um, what we see is that, uh, many workers from Pfizer has reutilized that service, um, and even with the job, which I, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, I don't know how much it was last year, it is really extremely significantly low from the neighboring towns. Um, and, and, and we also have one playground open this year as opposed to two, because the west side site is closed, so, um, that jump, I assume, or I imagine is, is we, we need, you know, 'cause we took a hit with not having the, that second location up. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other counselor?
So, sorry, Mayor, it's Mary, um, so families have an option, so they don't have to, uh, three hundred dollars for an eight-week program, where it works out to seven dollars and fifty cents a day. Um, we did start adding the weekly fee, um, a couple of years ago, because some families, you know, their kids don't wanna commit to the eight weeks. Um, if you, it's, it's, it's seven fifty a day, and we have them for six hours, they're paying fifteen cents an hour for their kid to be with us. So if you break down the math, it, it's reasonable. I don't believe, I, I wanna say we increased two years ago, not last year, with the anticipation of minimum wage, but we all have to recognize, minimum wage by twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, it's gonna be at fifteen dollars an hour for a starting staff member, entry level, camp counselor. So anybody above that, you have to do some, you know, you're not gonna have somebody supervising somebody at fif, they're not gonna make fifteen dollars an hour supervising somebody making fifteen dollars an hour, so we have to, it's not just the minimum wage starting point, it's how minimum wage affects the tiering of your, uh, of your other positions. You know, you have multiple other positions, you're not just have, you have a record assistance, and you go rec- recreation specialist, and you go the playground director, a supervisor, then you gotta dr, you know, you got multiple layers there that you have to compensate for moving forward, and this helps us do that, I mean, the, people have the option, you know, if they wanna pay the three hundred dollars, they can, if they wanna do weekly fee, they can, so, and we do, and I will, um, we do get a handful, we have a lot of Pfizer, a, and a lot of EB families that, um, come from East Line, Ledger, and everything else to, that come to our program, 'cause it's convenient for them, it's a very convenient location, it's on their route home. Um, but, like, again, a recommendation based on, you know, dollars and cents that were shared with them, uh, with the committee when we looked at this.
Okay, other comments from the council? You can send, uh, any questions that you have on this to Mary, similar to the previous motion that we had. But I will, if there's no, no other comments, question or comments, I'll take a motion.
And I ask if there's, sorry, Pete, is there any other questions on any other fees that were increased or changed? 'Cause that playground wasn't the only area. We had ballfields, and we have the Zaburski House also.
Deputy Mayor Depot?
I actually do have a question. On page six, it says, it's under Zaburski House, and it says, um, individual private parties, city resident forty dollars, non-resident eighty dollars, but then on the next page where it has the permit, it says fifty dollars for a resident, a hundred for a non-resident?
That's the alcohol permit, that's a different permit from.
Oh, okay. Oh, well.
That's the, that's the permit, so we have two permits for the Z House, depending on what you do. You have the regular permit for the house, which isn't included here, and then they have, which, I apologize, I don't know why it's not. And then there's a special permit, if you choose to have beer or wine at the house, and that's what's here, that's, that's, that's what, that's that one.
Okay, it's under private wood, that do not require a liquor license, it says fifty dollars for a resident, a hundred dollars for a non-resident, is that a different permit thing?
Yeah, that's, that would be the special, that, this is a special permit. So in addition to your permit to rent the house, which is included in here.
Okay, that's the deposit fee.
Yeah, and then, and then there's, if you just choose to have alcoholic beverages, beer or wine at the house, there's an additional permit. And those fees haven't changed.
Okay.
The pri, 'cause you either have a private party or a public one, but that's, this is after, this is a supplement to your regular permit, which, um, wasn't included in this. 'Cause that's just, that's just a, this is, this, this, the special permit was designed and put in place by the mayor and council, the permit for the Zaburski House itself is departmental, we, we, um, we, that, we have that in-house. This is for the beer and wine, 'cause it has a liability insurance and all that other stuff attached to it. So this is above and beyond your rent.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the council? In that case, I'll take a motion to move this, the twenty twenty-one Parks and Recreation user fees to the mayor and council meeting of April fifth.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries. Okay, the next one is Tyler House Window Project, Mary?
So I, um, as you all know, we've had, we had a public hearing on this, and then we've had the Freemans meeting and, um, to, uh, finish, no, sorry, the Tyler House, I'm sorry, getting tired, uh, the Tyler House Window Project and some of the other work that's associated with this, um, um, project, um, I put forth a resolution to complete the project, do the painting, and move forward to get this, um, um, project. Um, I put forth a resolution to complete the project, do the painting and move forward to get this um, project on, on uh, set forth to go forward. So we can get a purchase order ready for Gasco and we can get this project started.
Okay, questions for Mary? Deputy Mayor Depot?
Not really a question, but I um, I'm very excited that we're finally getting this done. Um, I just had a thought, maybe it would be a good thing to post on our city page and let people know, hey, we're starting this work. Please stay away from the area around the Tyler, like just a notice because on days where it is warm out, people are starting to go to the beach. So maybe it'd be a good idea to just say, hey, you know, yay, construction is starting. Please keep uh, you know, off the grounds around the Tyler House so that we can get it done quickly and safely and whatever kind of thing.
Well, and we may not get this started until after the beach season because of the lead time for ordering of the windows. Is that right, Mary?
Correct. So this project, there's some things that they can do prior to beach season opening, and that's some of the painting. Um, any of you all been up on the deck of the Tyler House? The ceiling paint is flaking, some of the posts aren't, um, the paint, paint is coming out. So they can get in and do all that. These are all custom made windows. So by the time they got them all done, we'd probably be right smack dab starting beach season. So this would prob- the window part of it would most likely start seven ma- seven of September. They, the Tuesday after Labor Day. Um, and then we can advise people, because we'll have a better timeline with the contractor, we could start advising, because even in the fall time, in September, people are out on the beach. Um, when the nicer weather, so that way, um, we can get a timeline from the contractor and really put some good details out there for the, for the residents.
Any other questions or comments from Mary? Counselor Sheffield?
Okay, um, so after this project here for the windows, uh, what additional uh, work is gonna be still needed for the Tyler House?
I don't have any others, other projects planned at the moment. For the Tyler House, we might be moving over to the Zaburski House again, but the Tyler House, that should get that pretty much completed. Um, there's some inter- ins- in, in, inside projects that we could, we're looking to complete, but that should be done before the season starts.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the council? And I'll take a motion to move the Tyler House Window Project to the mayor and council meeting of April fifth.
Don't move.
Don't move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, we're gonna move to seven eighty-one, which is building and zoning user fees. And I'll turn it over to Joe Summers to walk us through this. Joe, you're muted.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, and uh, uh, this is in ordinance uh, that I'm looking to revise in preparations of going to our permitting software system and also to change the ordinance so that in the future, the fees could be uh, revised by a resolution only, instead of going through the whole ordinance procedure. So the highlights of the proposal is to increase the minimum fee from thirty dollars for the first thousand to forty dollars for the first thousand. Each additional thousand would still stay at fifteen dollars and uh, the another section is to clean up the language from the certificate of use and occupancy, which really is just to be a certificate of occupancy fee. And that would only apply to new construction additions and certain changes to commercial projects. Um, the rest of the closeout procedures will be handled by the uh, forty dollar and fifteen dollar per thousand fee. Just that when it comes to a CO, uh, we have a lot of staff time and paperwork to collect and review in order to issue a CO for homes and commercial buildings. Uh, so it's very time consuming process. Another aspect uh, that I'm looking at putting in here is the waiver of fees. The current ordinance does not uh, have a provision to waive any fees for any city projects or anything brought forward by any boards or commissions within the city. So I'm looking to include that here and to have a clause that if um, a nonprofit agency wishes to have their fees waived, the council would have to waive that. Um, so those, so those are the highlights. Uh, like I said, the biggest is, is to get this changed so that in the future, fees could be changed by resolution and at a minimum five year interval. Last time the fees were changed was back in two thousand and twelve. Any questions?
Thank you, Joe. Question for the building inspector? Open to Florida Council? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to move this to, where are we? To the mayor and council meeting of April fifth?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion carries. Okay, uh, that was it. Short and sweet. We're good. All right, the next one is seven eighty, actuarial cost estimate two thousand twenty-one COLA for pre-two thousand seventeen retirees. I'll turn that over to Finance Director Uhas, Ron?
So this was, um, this, this comes before the council, um, annually, if there is an increase in the CP, um, CPIW average over the year. Um, over last year, there wasn't, there was an increase. So we have the actuary put a cost analysis together. Um, and what it, and that's the um, sheet that was handed out in the packet. The way that the calculation is done for the recommended COLA increases is it's the CPIW average increase, which was one point two one percent. And it's twenty-five percent of that increase. So it comes out to be a point three percent um, increase for pre-two thousand eighteen retirees. So on that sheet, you can see the impact on the actuarial determined contribution. It would be eighteen thousand, three ninety-eight. However, we've already built in an assumption into our actuarial report that already covers that contribution. So the net effect really isn't an increase in the um, ADC because it's already built in there. This was brought to the retirement board, uh, February eleventh, twenty twenty-one, um, at their meeting, which they approved um, and recommended for the council to, to review and um, hopefully approve for retirees.
Okay, questions from the council? Okay, hearing none, I'll take a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of April fifth.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you, Ron. Uh, let's see, six, seven, let's go to Grand Utilities Financials, five sixty-one. This is informing, Ron?
Very good. We'll do the, the time of how long this is going. We'll kind of keep it, keep it short and keep it to our um, normal presentation. Um, so we'll first turn to page six, which will be the electric division. And this is for year-to-date um, revenues and expenditures. So line nineteen, the total electric revenue is thirty-three point four million versus a budget of thirty-three million or just under five hundred thousand dollars over budget. As you can see, the, the drivers of that revenue, um, being over budget is the residential and the industrial class, where the commercial class has been um, kind of coming in under budget. And this is what we've seen, the trend that we've seen um, the entire year. Go down to row forty-one, which is total operating expenses, thirty-five point six million versus a budget of thirty-five point six million or fifty-seven thousand um, favorable for, for the year. So the, the expenditures are right on par with budget uh, from the year-to-date amounts. Net income from operations, line fifty-two, is three point six million versus a budget of two point two million or one point four million favorable, again driven by the um, the revenue of being over budget is the main driver there. So that's overall for the electric vision, division. Um, except we're over budget revenue-wise and right on target expense-wise with budget.
Any questions for electric? Ron, move on to water?
Water will flip to page twelve. Total water revenue um, for the airline seventeen is seven point nine million versus a budget of seven point five or four hundred thousand dollar favorable. Again, the drivers there, same thing as we saw on the electric side, the residential and industrial are coming in slightly over budget where the commercial is coming in um, below. Low, row thirty, total operating expenses, actuals, just over seven million versus a budget of seven point four or four hundred thousand dollars um, under budget. Line forty-four, the net earnings before the DWSRF grant is just over a million versus a budget of a negative six hundred and fifty-six thousand or one point seven million dollars favorable when you take the um, over, over budget revenue versus under budget expenditures for the year. And again, that's been the same trend that we've been seeing all year with the, with the water.
Okay, any questions on water? Okay, seeing none, Ron Sewer?
Then Sewer will flip to page seventeen. The total sewer revenue, row fifteen, is just under three point three million versus a budget of two point nine million or four hundred thousand dollars favorable. Again, this is driven um, by mainly by the industrial class. And as you recall, we've talked about in the past, there's been some deduct meter um, issues that have, have caused this fluctuation um, from the actual being over, over the budget for the industrial. Row twenty-six, total operating expenses, actuals just under two million versus a budget of two point four or four hundred and sixty-two thousand favorable. And then the net income for the sewer, row thirty-seven, is just under one point two versus a budget of two hundred and fifty thousand or nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars favorable. So you see the same trend here as you saw in the water with the over budget revenue and the under budget expenses driving that net income number.
Any questions on Sewer? Okay, so we'll move on to six ninety, city budget presentations. Uh, one of the things that I want to draw your attention to is in your packets. It's our budget presentations. I will deliver the budget to you on uh, April fifth. And you'll have that delivered to you with your packets. And we'll do a brief overview and then on the, on the following meetings, we will start discuss, we will have a department heads come in to discuss the uh, their individual departments. Ron and I are finishing up the budget this week. We're rolling it up to look at the uh, overall impact for the budget. And then, like I said, you'll have that delivered to you for the April fifth meeting. Okay, Ron, uh, city budget presentations, just the high level?
Yep, so in the packet, you have the year-to-date expenditures versus budget through February twenty-eighth. Um, again, taking a very high level overview, um, there should be roughly thirty-three percent remaining. However, only half the pension and half the OPEB have um, hit the budgets um, for all the departments at this point. So you can see that the, all the departments um, for the most part are fairly well um, above um, or come, below budget year-to-date as a percentage of the totals. Uh, the one thing which we've talked about in the the last couple of general insurances below that, but that was the one-time July expenses, which drove that twenty-nine point seven seven. So there's nothing to be worried about there. And then the other question that came up in the last um, meeting was the civil preparedness. And it was over budget in the last um, in the January year-end one. Looking into that, there was some grants that were charged there, which I kind of suspected that were gonna be offset and not through that funding source. So those will be moved over to a, to a separate account to, to actually um, track those from, to offset the revenue and they spent.
Okay, uh, Deputy Mayor Depot?
Uh, I just want to say thank you for Finance Director Uhas looking that information up that we asked about last time. Thank you for the follow-up. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Any question or comments on the city budget presentation? Okay, thank you, Ron. Let's see. Before we move, uh, well, I want to go six fifty-five, economic development. Uh, the cadets, Coast Guard cadets were going to uh, present today. And uh, we've decided to move them to April fifth. So during your April fifth meeting under communication report, where you'll get the Riverwalk presentation. So the last thing on the i- agenda items is seven eighty-two, Public Works. I want to talk about a couple of things. Uh, it has recently come to my attention, there were some things that have been performed uh, with public works that have been brought to question. And so I want to address that. One of them is the plowing, snow plowing of the Colonel Ledger Cemetery. What it looks like practice has been for thirty or forty years is to plow that front entrance to the uh, to the chapel and the round part, the turnaround there, and that's all. In return for that, what happens is that the uh, cemetery will take all of our leaves, all of our brush, all of our seaweed, all of our sod. And they put it in their compost area and they use that for, to make compost. And that, it gets in turn used on a cemetery. The cost savings to us uh, for seaweed alone is about fifteen hundred dollars a week during the season. Now, that doesn't really matter because that's not uh, parks, uh, not parks, that's not uh, Public Works highway money. So the question was, it's highway money. We get paid from the town, uh, the town puts that money in, so there's that. But the compost, we don't have to take it to Wells, to Wells Road. We also don't have to take uh, take our brush over to the uh, transfer station. And that saves us a forty-five minute round trip, wear and tear on the vehicles and the gas and the time. So in the end, there's, there is a cost savings to the city for that, which in turn is passed on to the town. Now, one of the things that I'm doing now is I'm working with the Cemetery Association to come up with an MOU to codify all this. But for now, what I've done is I said, we're gonna stop the plowing of that cemetery road. That way, there's no use of the, of the, of the funds, the vehicles, the people until we can get this figured out. There was also a question about, there was uh, excess asphalt that was used to pave a back part of a road. So we have a back entrance into the uh, library of the, excuse me, the cemetery that we use sometimes. And due to the mud and things like that, that gets, it gets uh, beat up and ruddy. And so there was extra asphalt that they had from a job on Fleming Court. So they took that over there and they basically filled in those areas and they uh, put up, put a, they patched areas, put a little mini road with the leftover asphalt that was gonna be taken and thrown and uh, thrown away. And it was used for that, that, that use only. Another thing that was brought up was questions about a uh, a driveway apron or commonly referred to as a curb cut. And there was a question about, was that legal? Was it authorized? And those kinds of things. In doing this research, we have an ordinance number fifty-five, which is ordinance relative to driveway accesses or walkways. There's also building, uh, I got the building inspector to give me some information that we have locally. So we do have a process for determining curb cuts and driveway accesses. Uh, and based on investigation, it appears that that uh, that access was properly installed with the proper permissions and using the approved processes that we have in the city of God. There were people that had responded to Facebook that said they weren't granted. There were people that had responded to Facebook that said they weren't granted, uh, extra curb cuts and things like that. You are allowed one highway, one road access, driveway access to your property. So, and that's what this is, some people had asked for a second driveway or a widened driveway and, uh, the second driveway is not allowed, the widened driveway, uh, there, it discusses what has to be met in order to, uh, have that widened driveway and when, and what the approvals are and those kind of things. So if you, if, uh, if people do have questions about driveway accesses and curb cuts and things like that, please feel free, you can call the mayor's office, you can also at 4103, 860-446-4103, or you can call, uh, Parks and Rec and talk to them and then they can lead you in that direction. There was also a question about, uh, services that we have provided to the state, and let me be specific on that. If you go to where Meridian Street, Meridian Street Extension is, where Clarence B. Sharp, you'll see four corners there that are state property that the state mows once per year. And, but it grows more than needing to be cut once per year. The state, when we've reached out to them in the past, the state has said they don't have the money for it, so they will cut it once a year. We have cut it and we will continue to cut it because it impacts sightlines and that's a safety issue and I don't want any wrecks to occur because people can't see. So down at the, down at Meridian Street, Meridian Street Extension, we will continue to mow that and up at Rainville Avenue on the one side, on the west side correction. On the east side, uh, of the road rather, we will continue to mow that as well because the town is not mowing it. The other issue was on Mitchell Street, up on the hill, there were two trees that had leaned and were in jeopardy of falling into a house. Those, that property belongs to Fort Griswold, so belongs to the state. The state had felled the trees and had, uh, had the trees cut up. We were conducting sidewalk repairs there and had st, stanchions set up and was controlling traffic. Henry Alves, who is the, uh, Park Ranger for the local parks for St. Trumbull, for, uh, Port Trumbull and Fort Griswold, reached out to Tim Umeres, who is, was the, the, and the, uh, Highway Director at the time and said, hey, since you got this cordoned off, would you guys mind taking the, the wood and getting rid of it for us? And so they took the cut up wood and then took it to the town, uh, so that it could be grounded. And those were the issues that were identified, uh, on the Facebook post and that I have been addressing, uh, this last week and this week, and it appears that, that, uh, we have our arms around that now. I also will report out to you that in the very near future, I will present to you a candidate for the, uh, Public Works Director and we'll have that position filled in a short period of time. They're currently going through, uh, the background investigation for the hiring process. And so that's that. The last thing I want to do before we look at executives, go into executive session, is there are several of the items on the committee, the whole list, that I would like to remove because we're not, they don't really apply anymore. One of them is 306, that's the discussion review of building and facilities improvement projects and 758, uh, whoops, 578 municipal projects. Those are basically, th, those can go away because they're pretty much the same as 550, which is a cap improvement and bond projects. So I would like permission to remove 306 and 578. And then I'll go through the list and then we'll keep track of them and then I'll get one motion to remove them all. Uh, Clerk Patrick, is that okay, or would you prefer individual motions? Okay, we can have one.
One motion, yes.
One motion, okay. I also want to go to 680, which is adopt a sign program that is now, that now falls under Seattle Patrick under economic development, so there's no reason for it to be on the committee of the whole. 709 is ground utilities rules and regulations. That doesn't need to come up again because we've reviewed them and they're up to date. If we need to bring them back up again for review, we'll do that. 79, 719 is crosswalks. Uh, I don't think we have any issues on crosswalks at this time. We've had some issues in the past in discussions, so I want to remove that. 728, which is space needs discussion, we are, uh, we're finishing up with the, with the space needs that we have. The last room, the last group that we have on the municipal side is going to be financed and then, uh, with the, when TVC moves out and, and provide space back to the city, then we'll be looking at how we're going to utilize that space. The next one is 728, 734 is Economic Development Commission Presentations. So, uh, periodically Sierra will come in and present, but that'll be on specific projects. We don't need a general Economic Development Com, Commission Presentation anymore. 733 Building and Zoning Forecast. We had that a while back based on the, uh, South Yard Assembly Building and the projects that were going on there, we don't need that anymore. And then 764 is the Electric Boat Construction Update, that was basically a duplicate of the 733. And, uh, so we don't, we don't need that update with this South Yard Assembly Buildings and those areas, we've been updated and briefed on that. So I would like to get a motion to delete items 306, 578, 680, 709, 719, 728, 734, 733, and 764.
So moved. Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Close, extension, motion carries. Okay, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant Connecticut General Statute 1 dash 206 Alpha to, uh, for, uh, to discuss personnel, police department, to include the camp, mayor and council and chief, who do we need in there, Reggie Stamford and you? And that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it'll include Reggie Stamford, the council, the mayor and Chief Spellman.
Mayor, point of clarification, that, will there be anything coming out of executive session?
There will be nothing coming out of executive session.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, second, we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Who's seconded? I, I heard, I, Counselor McCabe.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Sheffield.
Okay. All right, so we're going to the, so we are in executive session, we'll go to the room.
Good night, all.
Good night, Deb, thank you. All right, so we're going to.